Mr. Joe Jordan. Mr. Jordan will be followed by Mr. James Dillon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, Members of City Council. Honored to be here today. I'd ask me to bring some copies of our concerns. Could one of you fellows please hand these out? Is there somebody?
They'll pass them out over there.
Maria? Okay, sorry.
I'm President of the Houston Limousine Operator Networking Group, and we are very concerned about Uber coming in here. I realize you're doing a taxicab study, but Uber has a problem in other parts of the country in the last two years of being a not very unsavory operation with a disrespect for the law. I have some of our limousine company owners present here. Gentlemen, if you'd please stand up momentarily and sit down. And, ladies and gentlemen, and ladies, share my concerns, our concerns, that Uber is not good for the city of Houston. They want to come in and cut the prices. They have a reputation around the country of not obeying the law. While they were being studied in New York City, a judge issued a temporary restraining order, telling them to not operate, and they violated that order. In Los Angeles, the city attorney gave them a cease and desist order. They ignored that order and continued to operate. The problem with a company like Uber, they only exist in cyberspace. They're like people that do child pornography or people that do online gambling. They simply moved their websites to South America or to China. I'm here, I've got, and we are here, all our, we have brick and mortar buildings, we pay taxes, we pay city fees, we pay taxes. We have so many decals on our windshield from all our different permits, we can hardly see to go down the road. So you want to let Uber come in here and evade all of those and dispatch limousines from San Francisco. Now, see, here's the difference. They say that they're just a referral service. That's not true. A travel agent can come to a limousine service, say, "We want 10 limos and 10 buses next week." Then it's up to the company to dispatch specific vehicles and drivers, all of whom have license and permits. You have to have five different permits to go to Houston airports. So it's the company that decides that the vehicles are certified, authorized, and they go. So the company dispatching the specific vehicles, they're licensed by the city of Houston, and that's appropriate. So Uber says, "We're like a travel agent." No, they're not. They dispatch specific vehicles from a website in San Francisco, which makes them a limousine company like me. Okay? And if you are a customer, they rip off their customers, they rip off their drivers. They have this contract, which I can imagine in any business and in the industry. I want to read you two brief things out of their contract if you wanted to use Uber as a customer, consumer. Limitation liability. Uber will not assess the suitability, legality, or ability of any third-party transportation providers, and you expressly waive it.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. It's in there, y'all can read it later.
Joe, I have a question for you. I know how the taxicabs work a lot, you know, there are some, some guys who drive their own cabs, but more often, they're considered independent contractors and they drive a company cab. In the limousine industry, you have, the drivers lease their vehicles from the limo companies?
Well...
Or are they owner operators? Or do they work for the limo company?
There's a number of ways it can be done. In other words, a job can come into me for a vehicle I don't have, like a limo bus. I can call a company that has a limo bus that's licensed to use them. I'm saying, "I'm going to form out this job to you, I want to keep 10%." He says, "Well, I don't have any drivers available that Saturday." I say, "Well, call this guy over here. He has licensed badge drivers, have the FBI fingerprints and the badges." So the contract came to me, the vehicle came from one company, the driver came from another company. But everybody had the license and permits, so that's legal. As long as the vehicle shows up, it was arranged through a licensed company, the vehicle has the permits, and the driver has the city Houston chauffeur badge, that's fine. Everything's legal. Nothing wrong with that.
Now, if Uber wanted to use your company and your drivers for trips, they could contract with your company?
Well, I don't...
To allow them to, to allow them to be slotted in and for some commission?
Well, theoretically, they could, but I don't like Uber, and I wouldn't deal with them.
Theoretically, theoretically, huh?
Wait, theoretically, yeah. Well, yeah. Uber or American Express Travel, anybody come to me and say, "Joe, we need a limo next Saturday." Fine. And they could be a John Q citizen. They come to me...
But this is about, essentially, limos operating almost like cabs where you get quick turnaround. This is not in advance.
That's not really the issue. You have a town car in Houston from a licensed company, may do five, six, seven airport runs, and it may go to One Shell Plaza, could do a lot of jobs during the day. That's not the issue. They're being dispatched by a company licensed by the city of Houston that's here, that has a brick and mortar building where the company permits. See, it's the same thing like with Avis, wait a minute, like Avis, We Drive You. They're a big company with a lot of money. If they want to be in the limousine business here, let them rent a warehouse, buy four limousines, and get a company license, just like the rest of us. Let's have an even playing, level playing field. Uber, the same thing. Come to Houston, rent a building, buy some limos, get the $5,000 a car insurance premium a year, then you can contract with other companies and do 100 jobs. But they should be here, have a physical presence, and have a level playing field like everybody else has. We don't think, we think the ordinance is fine. We think the $70 minimum is fine. We've got a clean system here in Houston. And I get the calls when people have a bad experience, and I'm President of the Association, I call the company, if he's a member, and say, "Straighten this out by 5:00 today. We don't need these problems in the industry." If somebody gets ripped off by Uber, they can send an email to San Francisco that may not be answered.
Joe, I got a, I got a council member in the queue. Vice Mayor Pro Tim Bradford.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Jordan, unless I'm mistaken, if I am Mayor, please correct me here. The administration has indicated that this issue of Uber coming before council to act on or not act on, it's not in the near future. It may be some months down the road at best. If that is the case, why do you feel there's a need to debate this issue today? Because I've read data on this side of the aisle, data on this side of the aisle, and it's hard for me to start winding down and try to make a decision when I know it's not something that's in the near future that I'm going to have to deal with as a councilperson. So why do you feel the need to come out today and discuss this issue now?
Well, it's a good time. We know that it's under consideration, and we wanted to get our concerns heard early on in the process. I don't expect a decision today. We just want you to know how we feel. We don't think they're a good operation. I'd just say, Houston wants to get you as much information, because Houston can be looking at it at your leisure until such time you can study it. And also, I'm going out of town on vacation for a month, so this is a good time to bring it up.
I think, I think, I think fair enough. Mayor, is it, is it accurate for the record that you've indicated that you would wait until the study, the taxicab study is completed? And when do we expect that study to be complete?
I'm not exactly sure, but I think probably September-ish. It's this fall. It's, they're not directly correlated. Uber as a company has approached the city and said they'd like to operate in the market, and in order for them to operate, we have to make, we would have to change the ordinances. I'm not inclined to do that piecemeal, and since we're looking at whether to update our taxi ordinance, I'd like to kind of roll everything in together. And so the first step is to finish our taxi study, come out this fall, and then we'll go from there. I'll update council at that time.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Mr. Jordan, I assure you, I intend to fully grind through the issue, and based on the Mayor's comment, you have plenty of time to take your vacation and get back. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, Mayor.
Thank you for your time today, Councilman Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dillon. Mr. Dillon will be followed by Mr. Richard Moskurski.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Miss, and Council. I'm James Dillon. I am the President of Kerry Limousine of Houston, and also Chief Operating Officer of City Car Services Worldwide with operations in Washington DC, Philadelphia, New Jersey, and New York. Rather than going through my prepared remarks, which are going to be a little bit redundant in this, say I'm concerned, I'm also a board member of HALCA, which is a Houston-area livery and charter association. Skip the prepared remarks, because mine are about safety, and that's my primary concern for my clients and the traveling public. I have experience with Uber. Uber's in Philadelphia. I have operations that service Philadelphia. I have chauffeurs that have gone from being my employee, which my chauffeurs are employees, not independent operators, to working for Uber and now want to come back, but they're stuck with a car note. There wasn't a background check done. There wasn't drug and alcohol testing done. It was, "Are you interested? Here's your phone." That trip count has changed. He can't afford his car payment now. And that's consistent. There's a, there's a pattern of Uber in different cities and how they approach it. I have a safety issue. I want to work with council, not just because it's in my interest as a businessman, but I think it's an interest of public safety and what we're trying to provide for not only our own citizens, but for those coming from out of town and visiting our city. Because it is representative of who we are and what we do. Again, I'm happy to work with, with any of you during this time where you guys are looking at, doing the research and investigation. I think it's an important piece. I am against it, but I'm against it from a safety perspective. Let's have a level playing field where we all do the same thing. Thank you.
Mr. Dillon, thanks for coming down. I guess I'm going to ask you a similar question to ask Mr. Jordan. I'm not interested in letting anybody operate in Houston that doesn't have, for hire, that doesn't have the background checks and, you know, drug testing and everything else. In those other cities in which you operate, and Uber came in, what they say is that they use existing black cars and existing drivers, and those drivers stay with the companies and the cars that they have when Uber comes into the market. Is that not the case?
It is and it isn't. In some cases, if you're an independent operator and you have your own car, and in Houston, I'm going to have to operate under somebody else's authority, because I don't have four cars, I don't have my own authority. So they could come to me as an independent operator, and I'm working under somebody else's authority, somebody else's insurance, but I'm operating on behalf of Uber. So it becomes very complicated. You know, and each city has different regulations. You know, if Uber came to me and said, "Hey, you know, we want to partner with Kerry of Houston," I would say, "No, thank you." Because again, I have the customer service department, I have the insurance, I have employees, not owner operators. They're my cars. I pay for those cars, I pay for the brick and mortar. So it, it becomes very convoluted, and if one of my employees were to sign up with Uber, I would never know.
And if they had a, if they had an accident in one of your cars, it would be your insurance that would get them?
That's correct.
While they're on an Uber trip?
Because I'm going to be named. They're my employee, it's my car, it's my license. There isn't any insurance from Uber.
Interesting. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Moskurski. Mr. Moski, Moskurski, to be followed, he's not here. Okay, Mr. Jason Smith, Mr. Smith, will be followed by Mr. Eric Rendell.
Mayor, Councilmembers, good afternoon. I'm going to be brief. I'm here on the same issue as well with the Uber deal, and I understand, Chief Bradford, that it's still, still an early on topic. But as, as somebody who is even new to the limo game, I was a, I'm a veteran police officer that tripped and fell into a limo business, and here I am. I'm not concerned about Uber as a company. I'm not concerned about Uber competing against me. I'm not concerned about them coming to Houston at all. The only thing that concerns me is changing the ordinance. As a new guy coming into Houston, I made 19 trips to City Hall, or I'm sorry, to the, to the Regulatory Affairs Building to obtain a permit. And I was, I was furious and frustrated dealing with it, but as, as I go through the process, it is absolutely necessary that these ordinances are in place. The government really doesn't have the job of regulating the fair market. I'm a fair market guy, I believe competition's great, but the government does have a, have a severe duty in regulating the safety of the public. And as, as safety being what I've done my whole life and a limo guy being second, I can see where Uber's going to be, be an issue with that, with the insurance regulations, with me even regulating my own drivers. Simply signing up on an iPhone app and Uber being able to see where my drivers are at, I, I have the same concerns that Mr. Dillon does about being able to regulate my own drivers and know what's going on. I've done everything from put GPS in cars to anything, I can tell you where my cars are at and how fast they're going, but if they're on an Uber trip, I have no idea, because it runs simply off of a cellphone. Uber has, has been their policies that they can only be handled in courts in California. So our courts here really don't even have jurisdiction to handle them, because it's part of their user agreement that they have to be sued in California if there's an issue. They maintain a D-plus rating with the Better Business Bureau in San Francisco. There's been rape cases already filed in the District of Columbia. They've been served with federal court notices in Boston. This is a problem that just should be addressed before. It, it puts a dent in the black market, or the black car market here in Houston. Even as a new operator, I was brought down here to the Convention and Visitors Bureau for the upcoming Super Bowl, and, and we were an integral part at, at providing transportation and things for the Super Bowl, and Uber, Uber can do that as well. But your hometown guys are where it's at. The ordinance is perfect the way that it is, there's no reason to change it. If Uber wants to come, they just need to play by the rules, and welcome to Houston.
I'm going to remember all y'all saying that the ordinance is perfect the way it is. It's important to hear. Thank y'all for coming down.
All right, thank you. Chief.
Okay, Mr. Rendell, to be followed by Mr. Berain Almayo.
Good afternoon, Mayor Park and Councilmembers. My name is Eric Rendell. I'm the owner of Avanti Transportation and also the President of the Houston Livery and Charter Association. I'd like to bring a few concerns to you regarding Uber. I'm just reading your, a few issues here, what they have on the disclaimer on their website notifying the passenger, and reads as follows. Uber will not assess the suitability, legality, or ability of any third-party transportation providers, and you expressly waive and release the company from any and all liabilities. Next one it says, which is very disturbing, is that the quality of the transportation services scheduled through the use of the service or application is entirely the responsibility of the third-party provider, who ultimately provides such transportation service to you. You also understand therefore that by using the application and service, you may be exposed to transportation that potentially dangerous, offensive, harmful to minors, unsafe, or otherwise objectionable, and that you use the application and the service at your own risk. These are just a few notes from the disclaimer. It is also that they enlist any drivers they can find, because they cannot run their business model like we do what, what it needs to be done. They need hundreds of drivers. There's no way that anybody, neither me nor you, are that could control and see if they have a background check and if they're truck tested, and so on and so forth. There's no way anybody can do that. Otherwise, they will not be able to run their business with 5, 10, 15, or 20 employees. They're not even employees, they're just subcontractors. Who knows what they're driving? They also, as I said before, they do not hold, Uber is not accountable for any offenses the subcontractor does. As the previous speaker said, there are numerous, how should I say, dangerous elements out there who have, are on the counter ranging from arrest and rapes, including an example in Toronto where the Uber drivers refused to pick up passengers, because there was some heavy rain going on, which we haven't used in all the time. We never refuse to pick up any customer, neither the taxi industry nor the limousine It deceives consumers by falsely representing the drivers and vehicles are properly insured when they carry personal insurance and not commercial insurance.
Thank you, sir. Your time has expired. Thank you.
Sir, would it be, I know you don't want Uber in the Houston market, but...
I have no problem for Uber to be in Houston, but it has to be on the same playing field as we have.
Are there, are you aware of any cities that require Uber to only use existing certified cars and drivers?
No, they are, anybody has, has a city ordinance. Some ordinances are better than others. I believe here in Houston, we have a good one. It's maybe not perfect, but it's good.
So other, other cities do allow drivers to operate for Uber outside their, their regulatory web?
I could not imagine that anybody would allow to operate out of the city ordinance. I can't imagine that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Almayo, to be followed by Ms. Landra Johns.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I've never made a speech before, so forgive me if I make a mistake. And I know if this was a fistfight, I would lose against those guys, because I'm a limo driver, and I own my small business in Dallas. I drive, I subscribe for Uber. And what Uber does is, I started six months ago, when I started driving, what happened was I heard that Uber was in town, and I said, "Okay, can I join you?" They said, "Okay, first, you have to have a city-approved permit, you have to have an insurance that's approved, you have to go through a background check like everybody in the city of Dallas." And I proved that to them, that's when they put me on board. Ever since then, I have added three cars to my fleet. We are all regulated like everybody else. It's a good business, it's a win-win situation. It's like hotel.com, where they don't own hotels, but they help. There is a need for us, there is a need for limo, there is a need for taxi. It's a win-win situation. In our business, I do have my own business, I have limo service. When I am down is when I switch the Uber key to be active. That's when I get my business. So I think if they knew what Uber is all about, they would also benefit from it, because when we're not working is when we get more Uber services to the city. And most of my customers, I pick up customers from Highland Park. Those are kids that want to go to games, their parents want to go to shopping. They trust us. When they call Uber, they see my license plate number, they see my face picture, they have my telephone number, so they're very comfortable letting me take their kids to a ballgame and bringing them back. And this hasn't happened to me prior to this. So I really believe that Houston will benefit, the limo drivers will benefit, taxi drivers would not lose anything, because there is a need for everybody. That's my statement today.
So you operate, you operate out of Dallas?
Yes, sir.
And you are certified under whatever ordinance they have in Dallas? I'm not familiar with the Dallas ordinance.
Yes, ma'am.
And the three, your other three cars that you own are also registered with...
Otherwise, they wouldn't be operating.
The city of Dallas and all the operators have been through Dallas's background check?
You go through the whole, you go through the whole process that they go. For example, if you have to allow Uber to come here, Uber would check if they are regulated with you, if they have insurance. They have to go through everything that you give them to go through first. Once they can prove that they are legally working in the city of Austin, I mean Houston, is when they would allow you to join.
But you've signed up your car, all of your cars with Uber.
I signed them up, yes, but I...
So if you hadn't, would it be possible for one of your drivers to be taking Uber trips on the side?
No, because he wouldn't be subscribing, they wouldn't give him the GPS card, the GPS monitor.
My understanding is that they don't necessarily contract with the owner of the car, it's that they contract directly with drivers?
No, unless you are licensed as a driver and have a license to work in the city of Dallas, they wouldn't allow you to join.
Well, yes, as a licensed driver, but you, you could be in someone else's vehicle, you could be a licensed driver. Chair recognizes Mayor Pro Tim Bradford, Vice Mayor Pro Tim Bradford.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my understanding that you operate in Dallas, not in Houston, correct?
Not in Houston, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
And you are, you offer limo services and Uber in Dallas?
Yes, sir.
Not Houston?
Not Houston.
You realize Houston is much greater than Dallas, and we don't do things that happens in Dallas in large part because we want to be Houston. You realize that?
I'm here, I am here to give you the information, and the decision is yours, but...
I just want to make that point. Just because it happens in Dallas doesn't mean that we want to do it in Houston. At the same time, let me get serious now. Did I understand you correctly to say that your business grew as a result of having employed the Uber services?
Absolutely, because I have my own customers that I transport, but when it's slow, I switch to Uber, then I get whatever Uber is dispatching.
Okay, good. Thank you for coming down. I just want to go on record as saying that I really do want to do due diligence, investigate, and really look at the safety components on both sides, but I just think that it's hard for me to do it now, because the issue isn't before us now. So I'm going to just stand down going forward and listen to what people have to say, but I want to get back and talk to people like you who have personal experiences that, that we don't know about, we don't hear about. Let me ask you one last question. In Dallas, as you operate, are you in violation of any law, policy, and any court sanctions been issued against you or Uber, Uber as far as you know?
I haven't been told that, and I haven't violated any laws to this day.
Okay.
I don't even have a ticket.
Okay, because, because there's been, there's been testimony, you know, that Uber operates in most major cities in America, but for Houston, and in many of those cities, they operate in violation of policy, in violation of law. But you said in Dallas, as far as you know, they are within the law, within policy.
Sir, this is what I'm going to say to you. I have never violated the law. If I didn't know the city of Austin, I'm in Houston, and the drivers, because I'm one of them, know that it won't benefit either one, I wouldn't be here. I am not advocating for anybody, I'm just trying to state the fact. They have nothing to fear. I think the city will benefit, and, and I think, in my case, I grew from one car to four cars in six months. So it's a win-win situation for everybody. I think they should try it.
I thank you, I appreciate you coming down. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
One moment, sir.
Sir, sir, Councilmember Burks.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Let me ask you a question, sir. How do you charge?
In my case, I have a website, and I charge based on the advertisement I make on my website. And on Uber's case, they have their own charging fare on their GPS. When the customer logs into the website that Uber has, they will know how much they will be charged, they would know how much it would be by the meter, the distance, and the waiting time. They have the choice to say, "Yes, I accept," or "No, I don't."
But how do I know that you own Uber all your time?
You don't. When you call Uber, there are...
All right, let's, 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 let me, let me make it clear.
Let me answer that question. When you log onto the website, you will see how many cars are on the iPhone you have. You will see how many cars, how far they are, how long it will take to get the cab, the Uber service to come to pick you up. You would even know how many minutes it will take to get there.
Councilmembers, yeah, time's expired, we don't have enough to extend, but we do have some additional speakers on this item, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, Ms. Johns. Oh, they have a mistake. I believe you're Mr. Johns.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Johns.
Okay.
I'm Mayor Pro Tim. Councilmembers, my name is Leandre Johns. I am a tax exec for Uber. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak today. Uber is a technology company that's created an app that connects riders to legally licensed drivers. Over the past 12 days, more than 3,000 supporters have signed a petition asking this council to update antiquated transportation regulations and help bring Uber to Houston. This grassroots support illustrates the overwhelming demand by Houston consumers for efficient, reliable, and accountable transportation. I'd like to read you three of the comments on the petition, which is, I think, being passed around right now, from Cecilia Marquez. "We need more standards of transport in Houston, and Uber's all of these." Dave Lodols. "With Uber, there's no, no fear of being told my credit card machine doesn't work, or having to wait some undisclosed period of time for a car that may or may not ever come. Houston needs Uber and free market competition." Leslie Nelson. "My husband and I lived in DC for two years, and I used Uber all the time. It's really the best thing that could happen in Houston for drunk driving. Uber's professional, reliable, and clean. Please let Uber into Houston." This overwhelming demand for, for consumers underscores the desire for transportation options in Houston, particularly with the level of transparency and accountability that Uber provides. However, over the last past week, opponents of consumer choice have circulated false information about Uber. While they are entitled to their opinion, they're not entitled... about Uber. While they are entitled to their opinion, they're not entitled to the set of their own facts, and we'd like to correct them the record at this time. First, Uber is a technology company. We operate legally in all of our markets, including 18 Cs in the United States. We're not a transportation company at all. As such, Uber partners with local licensed and insured transportation companies, like Brahni said, who are in full compliance with local regulations. Third, anytime there's a change, those that benefit from the anti-competitive status quo will resist that change. That's been the case in many of our markets, as we've seen some in Houston. You've been provided with a statement that sets the record straight on those markets. And what's important to note is that once courts, regulators, and policymakers understand Uber's operating model, they stand with cities, drivers, and consumers for whom the benefits of our app are innumerable. The incumbents to the Houston transportation industry may not be ready for change and the innovation that we provide, but I can guarantee you that the people of Houston are ready for that change. Thank you for your time.
One moment. Councilmember Burks was in the queue. He stepped away. Go ahead. A councilmember, agree.
Thank you, and thank you so much for, for your presentation. Again, you know, the study is being conducted now. It will be, hopefully, we'll have the opportunity to vet this in committee, and so, you know, we can get down to, you know, what's fact and what's fiction. Just a couple of questions that I had with regard to, I guess, what's out in the, in the cloud, if you will. With regard to passengers who perhaps wanted to use Uber, maybe it started raining, and then another cab came, but they were waiting for their Uber cab to come. Is there an opportunity for them to cancel that once they've done that?
Yes, sir. Yeah, you placed the, you made the request, and if at any point in time you change your mind, you simply cancel the request, and that driver will get the cancel notice, and he can, you know, look for the next passenger.
Okay. And with regard to existing city of Houston regulation, with regard to, you know, the insurance requirement, the wheelchair accessibility, those issue, are you familiar with existing city of Houston ordinance?
I am, sir, yes.
And so are you saying that everyone that signs up has to be in compliance with those particular orders, wheelchair and things of that nature?
Again, we only partner with guys or drivers who have legal, have been legally licensed to drive by the city of Houston. We do not put on anybody otherwise.
Okay. And with regard to companies, we have, I think, in the ordinance, it requires that folks that are licensed under you, if there are some challenges by them, that you guys take responsibility. And I don't think that's your business model. Are you guys prepared to take on that additional responsibility of licensed folks who are under you?
I'm sorry. I don't quite understand your question.
If I sign up to be a Uber driver?
Sir.
And say, for instance, one of your drivers is not in compliance in some sort of way, you know, the city monitors that and essentially would come to the company to have the company, you know, either clear up the problem for its drivers. Are you guys saying that's something you guys would be willing to do, or because they're independent contractors, you just pass that on to them?
So when we partner with drivers, we partner with the company. The company has the operating authority, and then they, I'm assuming here in Houston, have the permits as well that they hold and they give to those drivers. So when we do partner with the driver company, it's those conversations that we have with those companies. So if a driver is, is not in compliant by the city of Houston, we monitor all the time. We send correspondence to our driver partners, weekly, monthly checkups. How are your drivers doing? Let us know if there's been any violations, anything that we should do in order to make sure that our driver partners are compliant with the city at all times.
And how does that work? Does that work through, you guys would open an office here, or you don't need to do that? How does that work?
So we localize. Any city that we, that we go into, we create a team for that city, and we localize our operations there. So we would create a team here. Usually, we're very supply and demand kind of company. So you would have a general manager that would operate in that city, and then you would have a supply-side guy who'd really work the operation side of the business, and a community-side guy.
So you would have brick and mortar, essentially, here?
We would have brick and mortar. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Burks.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Let me ask you just some quick questions, and I'd just like, we know about Uber. Who's the founder of Uber?
His name is Travis Kalanick and Garrett Camp is the other.
Okay. Now, how do you do your billing in Uber?
Billing to our drivers.
Uber, thank you. Thank you, councilmember. Uber.
We, so every Monday, we look at all the trips that were done, and every driver is then paid out on Thursday.
And if there's a dispute, if I, I'm looking at it from a customer standpoint. I have used my credit card. I am in Washington DC. I am using your service, but you overcharged me by $1,000.
Easy enough. All you have to do is write to us, call us, and we simply just go in. We can look at everything, and that's the great thing about it. We're very, very data-driven. So we can see from the minute you made that request, all the way to the very end, and we can adjust that for you.
Just write to you. I don't know who to write to.
What's that?
I don't know who to write to. I just got you on my cellphone. So I mean, how do I do that?
Time's expired. I'm sorry. We do not have enough council members. We're going to be running into this issue quite a bit. We don't have time anymore.
By May.
Thank you very much for your time.